Thanks for joining us on Patch Talk. Today is a little bit special. Uh, Patch Talk would like to focus on some of the politics of our local area. Um, because with all the political talk and everything, does everybody really know what's going on? Um, and how the laws are actually made? So, one of the first things that we did is we went to a town hall meeting, which was put on by a state representative Matt Lehman, uh, in Burn, Indiana, which is where we live. And kinda got an overview of the legislative session. Um, it's halfway through, so kinda where we're at. Um, he does a really good job. He takes a few questions. It is about an hour-long video, so I hope you bear with me. But I learned a lot of interesting things and I hope you guys can learn kinda what goes on with passing the bill, that kinda stuff. So, we're planning on doing some more interviews with local politicians and maybe even up to governor if he'll actually do it. Um, but this is where we're gonna start. Hope you enjoy.
Alright, I bet everybody can make it out today. Beautiful sunny day. Um, I was up in Decatur a little bit ago. Not as big a crowd as I thought maybe they were more, uh, I know Randy Cold question wouldn't be golfing. Uh, and so, but I'm glad you guys came out. Uh, if you get my e-newsletter, great. If you don't and want one, um, I wanna get it after your orders, just come to sign up. We'll make sure you get our e-newsletter. So, we're at the, uh, we're nearing the halfway point of the session. Uh, next Tuesday, a week from this coming Tuesday, the 28th is our last day to get bills out of the House of Representatives. And, uh, Tuesday of this next week is the last day for hearings, committee hearings. So, I would say ninety-nine percent of what's out there that you may have heard or seen is all there's going to be. There's not gonna be a lot more coming out, uh, in the next couple of days. We have, uh, I'll just kinda run through this page here. You guys back there really getting a nice, uh, part of the class. Um, the, uh, I'll kinda walk through the agenda items, 'cause that's the stuff that's out there moving. Um, and then I will, uh, we'll dig into a little more detail on all these as we go through. Uh, the main thing, we're in a short, we're in a long session this year. The Indiana General Assembly has a short session in the even-numbered years, and we start the odd-numbered years with a long session. That is the budget year. Indiana has a two-year budget. So, the budget is the number-one priority. It is House Bill 1001, uh, because it is the number-one bill that has to get out. The only thing we have to ever pass out of the General Assembly is the budget, uh, so we can bear bills. So, that came out of, uh, that came out of ways and means this week. When we talk about a structurally balanced budget, what that means is we are making sure that the money we bring in is spent and spent in the year that it is budgeted for. Uh, years ago, when I was on county council and Eric's there, been there, and Tony's there, uh, as president of council, we'd always get this letter from the government, the state, that would say, "You need to borrow money. And, uh, you need to borrow money in June, and we'll pay you back in July." And I just thought, "That's just interesting, how they do that, never knew quite why." Then I found out that they didn't have the money to pay us in June. The counties can borrow money, but the state cannot. Uh, so they pushed us back, so we never had a structurally balanced budget. Uh, the last several years, we have had a structurally balanced budget. We're gonna maintain that. Reserves. A lot of people say, "Well, you know, we've got this $2 billion reserve. Why don't we spend that reserve?" Uh, when we talk about road funding, they say, "We'll spend the reserve." We, we, we keep reserve for two reasons. One is, it's like anybody else, you wanna keep a little bit of money in the bank for the things you did not anticipate. The things you did not expect. We had money in the bank in 2008, when the recession hit. We were able to get through that. We had to cut some funding to things, but we didn't have to raise taxes. We didn't have to generate a ton more revenue because we were under, under budget, or under balance. The other thing it does is, it maintains our AAA bond rating. And when you start to talk about AAA bond rating, a lot of people's eyes glaze over. And they say, "Well, that, you know, what does that really mean?" Okay? It means how we borrow money and the interest rate we pay on the money we borrow. Now, remember, I said, "The state doesn't borrow money, but locals do." So, the AAA bond rating, when the city of Burn does a water project, when the county does a infrastructure project, if they bond for that, they use our, the state of Indiana's AAA bond rating. Uh, that can mean the difference of an interest, a point or two in interest, uh, which can turn into millions of dollars potentially, uh, in additional cost to a project if we don't have a AAA bond rating. One of the things that we keep a AAA bond rating with is our balance, is our reserve. It's reserve, it's having money in the bank. So, our budget is, is balanced. Um, we do increase in the budget, and we'll talk about education in a second. We do increase the fund, uh, foundational amount to all schools. Uh, every school in my district this year, the way their law, the, well, I'm thinking in church now. The way the, uh, uh, school runs are is every school is getting an increase in their, in their base. Every school gets an increase in their base. There's all kinds of factors, special ed, complexity factors, free reduced funds, things like that. But even at the end of all of that, all of the schools will get an increase, uh, in their, in their funding. The second thing on there, the long-term infrastructure needs. I'm gonna come back to that in a second. Uh, that is the road funding bill. Uh, the third one, strength our community through educators and students. We got a lot of education stuff out there, we always do. A lot of people ask me, "Why do you guys always do education stuff?" Keep in mind, fifty-two percent of K-12 spending is in the budget. So, when you're using half your budget on one particular part of the, of the state's funding, uh, it takes a lot of attention. Takes a lot of attention. Couple of things there that we're working on is, uh, we're still working on, on changing the I-Step and the assessment. Couple of things in that bill, 1003, the like, is it, it, uh, um, it does put a little more with the, uh, the matrix of, of calculating, uh, the effectiveness of teachers more at the local level and not just the test level. Um, and it, uh, it also has the, uh, bringing in a lot of other options on, on, on the testing of assessment. We still have to assess. That's so far in federal law, we still have to assess. We have a lot more leeway now, and I think the schools will, will, will do a good job of utilizing that. Um, our pre-K program, uh, state of Indiana, a year and a half ago, started a pre-K program, uh, for, for, uh, a lot of the poor people in, in, in distinct counties. We're working in expanding that into additional counties. I, I am not a, a huge fan of, of the full expansion of pre-K, it's just not fundable. Um, but statistics after, statistic after studies show that a solid pre-K program for a kid, uh, does help them attain better. Some studies show they bounce out by third or fourth grade, but especially in the underprivileged communities, a, a strong pre-K is, is, is very, is very vital. Um, I don't necessarily like, there's a couple portions I don't like. There's a tie to some voucher expansion. The Senate does not have that. I don't think you'll see, I, I hope we don't see that in the end. I think vouchers, I'm okay with vouchers, but they need to stand on their own and not be a part of the, of the pre-K. Um, the other thing within the pre-K is it expands this pilot into ten other counties. I would like to see that expanded to all counties, but keep in the factors of, uh, of poverty. Uh, because I, and you have to have a Level III or IV, um, uh, pre-K, and so some counties don't have that. I think it should be, any county that has an eligible pre-K program should have access to that grant. Leave the money where it's at, leave the cap at the 20 million, but let every one of those, uh, go in and get some of that portion of that out, uh, for some of their, some of their citizens versus geographically. Uh, we'll see where that goes. Focus on track, retain, and improve the workforce. Um, biggest problem we have? We have two problems in the state of Indiana when it comes to the workforce. And I don't hear in this, I'm gonna say it over here, so this group right here can see this, hear this. Is skills? Skills. We, we have a lot of employers who've come and said, "I've got positions open. I don't have the skill or workforce to do it." They just aren't skilled. We're working on retraining. We're giving retraining grants to businesses to send people out to get retrained. The second one is, can't pass drug test. There's a high percentage, a high, one employer told me, "I have a position open, I have forty people applying. Uh, fifty people applying, thirty-seven of them passed, failed the drug test." Thirty-seven people failed the drug test. And the answer was, "You know, I'm sorry, I can't hire you, you failed the drug test." "Well, I only do marijuana." Okay? "I only do marijuana." And, and, and it leads to a bigger issue, which is the last goal point here, is we have a drug problem. We have an opioid problem, and, and Dan, State Trooper Dan Mayors here, Dan was up in Decatur. You know, we, it's not, you know, I grew up in this town, and, uh, you know, everybody said, "Man, you know, Fort Wayne's got problems. Indianapolis has problems, Gary has problems." Adams County has problems. Okay? And the first thing is, you, we gotta admit that we have a, we have a drug problem right here in this county. And Dan can, he can vouch for that. I think Judge, um, Judge Miller said he, what, had seven hundred cases, drug cases in his court this year. Those are Adams County cases. You know, so we do have a problem here. It's not just heroin that you hear a lot about, it's, it's, uh, prescription drugs. Uh, we do have an opioid problem. So, we're looking at some things on sentencing, uh, we're looking at some things on just awareness, uh, because we have to, we have to address that drug problem. So, those are kinda the, the high-end pieces we're talking about. Uh, just by the numbers, there was, uh, I've got my glasses in, I'm thinking. We, we have passed out, there's about seven hundred bills that were filed in the House. We've passed out about ninety. So, a lot of people ask sometimes, "How many bills get processed?" So, we're, we've put about ninety bills over to the Senate, like I said, about a week ago. Um, a couple of things that are not, uh, you know, the major, the big-ticket items we talked about. So, people ask questions about, if I can find my paper I had in, here, maybe it's still in Decatur. Maybe someone else has. Can they have the paper with all my notes on it? We're gonna go by memory. Um, I always get asked about Sunday sales of alcohol. Uh, that is a, uh, that's a dead issue this year. I'm not necessarily opposed to Sunday sales of alcohol, but I think what we have to do is you have to have a Level 12 bill. Right now, we don't. Uh, we don't have a Level 12 bill. I think it's ironic to me that you can, you can't walk into a liquor store with someone under the age of twenty-one, or I can walk down the alcohol aisle at Walmart with my ten-year-old. Um, there's just inconsistencies in some of Indiana's alcohol laws. This summer, I held a summer study on alcohol laws in Indiana, uh, just their inconsistency. A lot came out of that to show where we just, we don't manage our alcohol well in this state. So, I think over time, that is an issue we're gonna have to deal with. But that issue of Sunday sales is not gonna happen this year. Um, trying to think what there's, I haven't got another one on there, but I don't remember what that one was. So, let's talk about, let's talk about the gas tax. That's an issue that a lot of people have with the surgery. Um, at the beginning of the session, I told our caucus, uh, we have to think generationally. Okay? One thing we have a problem with in Washington DC is they all, we always say, they always think for their term. They always think about while they're right there. They don't think beyond that. Which is why we have a $19 trillion debt. And I'm not gonna pay that $19 trillion debt. King Nissom, you're not gonna pay that $19 trillion debt. Every one of you over here is gonna pay that $19 trillion debt. Okay? So, that's, that's the reality of not doing what you should do in the time you're there. Okay? So, some people said, "Well, you know, we need to have, our, our roads are fine. Our roads are fine." I drove home, I drive home from Indianapolis on I-69, and then 218 to Burn, and, and that's some of the nicest roads there are. I-69 is great. Okay? There's a part by Anderson's, it's pretty good. Okay? Anderson, I agree with you. Anderson has some issues. But then coming home this week, I, uh, there was an accident on 465, so I had to go on 70 to, uh, come up through Newcastle, uh, on, on 3, and then, uh, uh, over to Marion, or Muncie, and up 67, then 27. 3 is bad. 67's bad. 27, if you go to 27 from Bryant, to, uh, from Portland to Bryant, you know, it's terrible. Okay? Now, that is on the list for this year within Donovan. Confirmed that about every week, I say, "Please tell me it's still on the list." 'Cause that is a desperate road. But it tells me the people say, "We don't, our roads are fine." They are not fine. Okay? We need to do something about the infrastructure in Indiana. So, the crossroads in America, right? Every, all, everybody comes through Indiana. And right now, on I-7, the I-65, anywhere they estimate thirty to forty percent of traffic is passing through. They're not stopping in here, they're passing through. Okay? So, one of the pieces of this is, they will hit tolling. Um, people say, the, 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 the economists will tell you, "If you're gonna pay for something, it needs to be user-based." So, if you're gonna build a road, toll it. Okay? Well, we can't toll roads in Indiana without federal government's permission. So, in the bill, it simply says, "We're asking that state of Indiana, the governor has to go through the executive branch, the governor to petition the state, the federal government, for permission to study tolling." Are we gonna have a toll? Not tomorrow, maybe a while, okay? But to study tolling. The other part of the bill that's in here on the tolling portion is, you cannot toll within seventy-five miles of an existing toll. Part of the concern is this, there's a toll up in here northeast Indiana with the, with the toll road, the old toll road. Uh, they toll the bridge down in Louisville. And so, if we can toll, are they gonna suddenly toll I-69? You know, are they gonna toll, uh, sixty, or is it 64 that runs across the bottom of, of Thunder, Indiana? Um, no. The reality is, it needs to be more centrally located. Needs to be really, it's I-70, I-65, somewhere in that central Indiana, 'cause that's where the expansion is. That's where they're putting in the additional lanes, and should we be able to toll them? So, I'm kinda working backwards here, uh, from the bottom tolling and we'll go up. Uh, there's an implementation of a $15 registration fee on your vehicle. Uh, it's a hundred and fifty dollars if you have an electric car. Right now, you do pay for electric cars to register, but you pay, obviously you pay no gas tax, um, and you pay nothing for using the roads in the, in the sense of, uh, gas tax. So, those two fees automatically go to local roads and streets. Now, that money comes to the state of Indiana. That fifteen dollars increase on your registration, the hundred and fifty dollar for the car, goes strictly into local roads and streets. The other thing is, um, on the, uh, uh, on, on the revenue, talking about locals, um, the locals have had, we, we implemented this last year, a community grant program, where if your county has a wheel tax, you put up half the money, the state puts up half the money, that gives you more money into your local roads and streets to do that. The county council adopted that wheel tax. Uh, we've shifted it this year to be no longer a fifty-fifty match, but an eighty-twenty match. The locals put up twenty, the state puts in eighty. Okay? Our goal here, keep in mind, is that the majority of roads in Indiana are maintained by locals. Uh, and we have to make sure that more and more of this money is making its way back to the locals. Um, so, the community grant program, locals. The, uh, the, uh, uh, registration fee, locals. Gas tax, ten cents gas tax. Presently, you pay two taxes and you go to the gas pump. You pay sales tax at seven percent, and you pay an eighteen-cent gas tax. Of the eighteen-cent gas tax, that's what goes into local roads, that's what goes into roads of the state of Indiana. The sales tax you pay right now, two and a half cents goes to roads. The other four and a half cents goes to fund police pensions, it funds other pensions that we have. Uh, it just goes into the general fund as well to run, operate other, other programs. This bill moves all that seven cents immediately to roads and streets. So, the whole seven cents in, in sales tax will now go to, uh, to the road fund. Um, ten cents, uh, on, on the gas tax, there was a proposal that it goes ten cents, then index it, uh, from now until as inflation goes up. It goes up with inflation. That was capped at one penny a year maximum. So, if you don't have, if you have a low inflation rate, you're not gonna see it being, you won't have a penny automatically. It's based on inflation. I don't like that. I, I mean, there's a part of me that doesn't like future taxing. Um, so I did have an amendment this week that went into the bill that changes it to a seven-year index. And the reason I chose seven years, the seven years from now, the new CAFE standards hit, hit, hit the US. There's gonna be a requirement, you have to have, you know, X amount per mile, per gallon on your vehicle. Uh, when that hits, and then you're about three to five years on road projects, so it gets that. Road projects are in place, your new CAFE standards hit, what's your need? Okay? If we simply increase the tax forever, uh, someone needs to review that and say, "Do we still have that need?" Or is our need greater? 'Cause if the CAFE standards hit, we're gonna see a reduction in, in, in income off the gas tax, um, and then you're gonna see more of a push for tolling. Uh, so I do think there needs to be a pause at that seven-year period, and the people sitting in those seats seven years from now can make that decision. Not the people sitting here today. Uh, Jeff Estes, many of you may remember Jeff, or know Jeff, he's from Wells County, long-term rep over there. Uh, someone told Jeff one day, "Jeff, if you had done this ten years ago, indexed it, we wouldn't have this problem." And I said, "Yeah, but that's not Jeff's decision to make ten years ago. It's our decision to make today." And, and, and I think periodically, those, those representatives need to do that. Uh, the other thing is, is it may, we don't know what seven years is gonna give us when it comes to our revenue. Maybe it's too much? Maybe it's not enough? Uh, a lot is gonna come with, with road, uh, design and road construction. So, really what we're doing right now, we do nothing, and I've told people, it's an easy vote to say no. I mean, I don't wanna raise taxes, okay? It's an easy vote, I'll vote no, and not raise taxes. But keep in mind, we're gonna continue to build roads using 2000, I think it was 2003, last time we increased the gas tax. The revenue from 2003 does not buy what you need in 2017. So, we can continue, but your roads will get you better. You know, we'll still do road projects. We still have the, you know, the, the, the second generation, next generation funds from the toll roads. That's used, we use that to build new roads. But those projects will diminish. And I think if we're just doing the same thing the federal government's doing, is we're gonna stick the burden on the next generation to fix our roads, and that billion-dollar need becomes a $2 billion. So, I think it's the right policy to do. Um, and again, like I said, we are moving the whole sentence over. Here's what I hear from the majority of people who oppose this. First of all, there's some that just don't like the tax, okay? Well, I'll be honest with you, I've never signed a no-tax pledge, and I never will. And the reason is, I'm a pragmatic person, government runs on money. Okay? You don't like it? You know, you don't, you don't, you don't wanna have, ever have a tax, and you're gonna not have services. You're gonna have to sign it. If that breaks down anywhere, it does not become law. So, that's where a lot of this stuff is at. The bills that are moving out of the House, now go to Senate, we're gonna get Senate bills. If, if you're concerned about a Senate bill, I really can't help you out, because I don't look at what they're doing until we're done and get whatever they send us, and then we'll look at it and see what's important, what's not important. So, that's a big overview. I've talked long enough. What is on your mind? What are your thoughts? Comments?
I'm in 1004, House Bill 1004. What are the thoughts on that? Passing out of committee, passing into a bill, passing over to the Senate?
Senate, Senate 04 is on its way to Senate. That's the pre-K. Yeah, 1004 is the pre-K, but that's already out of the House. That went out of the House this week, this past week. Uh, there's voucher expansion language in that that gave a lot of us, a lot of, very problematic. Uh, don't like that. The Senate version of the pre-K bill does not have voucher language in it. I'm, I'm, I'm not opposed to vouchers, but I think they need to stand on their own. So, I didn't like that we coupled that with our pre-K program.
Does it have the online companies still?
The virtual?
Yeah. Does it still have them?
There's some language there. There's always a, virtual education is becoming a really big, not huge, it's not huge. In fact, I think, uh, um, I've asked a lot of people this, and I get all kinds of different answers. I think it's interesting. Right now, enrollment, enrollment in Indiana, how many, how many kids, of the, all the kids in the school system, how many kids are enrolled in traditional public schools? What do you get? Okay? Keep that in mind. Right now, ninety-three point five percent of all kids are in public schools. Uh, 2.5 percent are in charter schools. Uh, 3.1 children take a voucher, and then point nine percent of students are in the virtual, uh, school. So, it is an emerging technology, but it's still very, very, very small, uh, very, very small portion. So, obviously, the discussion is there, but the discussion still is focused on, on the public education portion of that.
I'm just, I think, I think my main concern on that are the companies that are involved with that, which may also have a conflict with donations. And I don't know how much of a percentage that is, or if that seemed a concern. I mean, I don't know.
There's always a concern with things like that, Cody, but I, I'm not aware of anything that would, that's been addressed in that. I don't think a federal pick has ever brought up. Uh, there's always been a concern with charter schools. You know, some of the funders, some of the charters of charter schools, there's some conflict there, but, um, but the charter school issue is kind of, uh, not being dealt with at all. There's not a lot of charter schools that are involved in this issue.
Thank you.
Hey, Matt, is this legislative survey at all, is this anything wider than for our?
That's, that's, that's by our district, my district. That's, that's right now, I don't know if it's on there or not. They won't, they won't give us a result of the survey until you get up over six hundred people. And at the last, I think before we printed this, before we left this week, there was about eight hundred and sixty-five people who filled out the survey. Which, to be honest, if you've ever sent out a survey for anything, about eight hundred and sixty-five was not too bad. You know, 'cause normally, you don't get that kind of, you don't get too many people to respond to your survey. I get a lot of people ask, I'll say, "Hey, I saw your survey, that was nice." I'll say, "Did you just throw it out?" "Well, no." I mean, you kinda know what I think. Thank you. Scott?
Hey, I appreciate your perspective on the survey, and what's on state, and then how that affects your, uh, bond rating. Um, House Bill 1009 is, is, is gonna reorganize a whole area of, uh, educational funding and operating funding with your schools. Uh, the way I read it right now, the rainy day fund, the school reserves is gonna be put in that operations fund. If I'm concerned about that, it kinda gets swallowed up, and that school will not have a means to, uh, keep a reserve fund for the rainy days and emergencies. Um, and as far as bond rating too, it was the rainy day fund, in part, a lot of schools began to set up bond ratings and re, reclaiming their bonds last summer. So, that concerns, you know, things can do with this. This, it really helps out our community. So, I, this would encourage you, I don't think it's out of the House yet.
1009?
I don't think so. But it encourages you to, um, make sure we can still keep a reserve, whether you call that the rainy day fund or what, like, you should, you can, uh, keep a reserve amount.
Yeah, it is out of the House.
It is out of the House.
Yeah, it's out of the House.
I understand.
No, it's out of the House. And it went out of the House, I think it was, the vote was ninety-two to three. Out of the House. One of the, one of the things Scott, what, what Scott's talking about is, there's always been these silos of money. And I, and, and I think they'll even admit, it was, could be restricted at times. Good things came out of it, but also some poor things came out of it. When you, when you put the money in the silos and tell schools, "This is the money you gotta spend here, you gotta spend here, you gotta spend here." One of the things we've tried to do over the years is break down some of those silos. I think what this intent to do is to put them into basically two funds. You got an education fund, you got a capital fund. The concern I think Scott has, and it's a valid concern, is, is the rainy day fund, I have no problem putting the rainy day fund into your general amounts, because it needs to be under your control. Problem is, well, it's under your control. Again, it goes back to the promises we make are, I, I personally, and I've said this before, I have no problem giving Scott Littler all the control he wants of the money that is given to him by the dash payers, because I think Scott Littler does a pretty darn good job of balancing the budget in South Adams schools. Not all school systems have a Scott Littler. And so, the concern sometimes is, we have to make sure that we don't put that rainy day fund in the control of the super tense hands, and then it's just gone. Okay? So, the, the needle on this is gonna be, how do we make sure we give you the authority to spend the money where you need it? But also maintain some control that says, "You can't, you can't empty the bucket." And I think that, that's where there's supposed to be some discussion, maybe Scott. And I think what we were told, the promise kinda coming from, uh, Representative Cook, and those working on this, is, "We're gonna find a place that super tents are comfortable, so we don't simply turn the, you know, turn the keys over and say, 'Well, we're gonna walk away.'"
But no super tents in Indiana, so that's why I don't know. It's too far to tackle the full board, uh, and the livelihood, the money, with staff, teachers, what's that? Can House make comments about the funding, the funding formula? Um, you know, looking at, uh, LFA's run, and just doing some quick calculations. In the, the base, which is the foundation complexity, South Adams will see twenty dollars more per student next year. And so, if our enrollment stays the same, that's twenty-five thousand more dollars. Alright? So, the good thing about that is not less, because South Adams has seen.
What you've seen?
However, the performance grant goes away. And so, last, well, this school year, South Adams got forty-nine thousand performance grants. And I know that a lot of youth is in that performance grant. So, really, our net gain is now a net loss of about twenty-five thousand.
Well, and, and Scott, I, I, I agree. The issue of the, uh, performance grant, and that is be addressed in a separate bill, uh, because I know, I know one of the things I wanna do is decouple that from the actual funding formula. Um, but I'm gonna jot that down, so I wanna make sure I'm accurate on that.
I can, I can see that.
Okay. Well, if you remember right, we were, we were, for years, the last several years, uh, we've been in that return to foundation, uh, where small school grants from years ago, uh, were deemed to be, you know, can't do that anymore. You gotta move everybody back to one fund for every school. You start every student, and I, where they're at, the same. And then you add complexity factors, and you add other factors into that. Um, and right now, it's the first year of South Adams has, last year, everybody went to the, the return to foundation with Scott. So, when we increased, so, I mean, to Scott's point, the foundation, your foundation increase this year was about three hundred dollars a student. Okay, but then you add your complexity factors, those change, the performance grant comes out, some of those things where you end up, uh, with that twenty dollars per student definitely. So I, I think we're, again, we'll, we'll talk about it afterwards, but the performance grant portion, uh, I think is trying to be decoupled from the formula. Right now.
Matt, what is the Senate side working at with the gas tax? In your opinion, what do you think Kenley wants to change deeply from what the House bill is going over? Have you heard any rumblings or?
The Senate, the Senate, and again, just in, in casual conversations with, uh, Luke Kenley, who's the head of appropriations in the Senate. Uh, Luke has always been a big fan of polling. Um, I think he would expand polling more predominantly than, than anything else in that part. Not opposed to the gas tax. Uh, uh, the indexing, like I said, gave everybody a little bit of pause. We don't like the idea of having a kind of a perpetual tax increase. Um, so I'm not sure what they'll do. I tried to make it a little more palatable with the seven year. Uh, they may take that out. Uh, again, I, one of the big issues with that that came out, to be honest. So I, I have really no idea. They, they don't have a plan. Uh, I mean, they'll put that one. They're not passing their bill and then we pass ours. There's somebody taking ours.
Yeah.
And amending it to look what they want. So they've held their cards pretty close to the vest as to what their plans are, but they've not. I mean, Kenley came out and he said he didn't, he didn't like the indexing. Uh, and I think, uh, he's always been one, and, and God love him, he's, he comes from what I call the, the donor area of Indianapolis. Um, he, he's not a big, wasn't a big fan of local funding, uh, putting more and more money back to the locals. Uh, but, you know, all his roads are mostly interstate or something like that, where ours are all county roads.
They're having a road day funding thing that I see is Tuesday, I'll be there for that.
I, I saw that on my calendar. It was road funding day, I thought.
Well.
Road funding?
Well, Bosma's going to speak and some other ones are going to speak, and then we're going over to the State House, but I, I, I guess what, I guess what I'm saying is. If we talk to the senators, what should we be saying if we like the House bill better than what we think the Senate is going to do?
Well, if you like where it is, just tell them the parts you like. I mean, what, what, what do you? And, and again, on, on the tax increase, it, it, you know, I had somebody come to me and said, you know, I don't, I don't drive a lot, but I really can't afford fifteen hundred dollars more a year. I said, let's do the math. And how many miles do you drive a year? Oh, about ten thousand miles a year. I said, okay, when you get miles on your car, twenty-two miles a gallon, twenty miles a gallon? You know? I mean, so you're looking at less than five dollars. He drives ten thousand miles a year, less than five dollars a month? I said, with, and that's, so you're what, uh, you, you thinking your fifteen dollar fee for the plates, you're about sixty dollars, sixty-five dollars a year? So I, I think it's, in, in perspective, you know, you'd always compare it to what do you spend sixty-five dollars on during your year that you could do without? Uh, but that's not fair. That's your expendable cash. You can do what you want.
I think it's the user fees that are preferred, because those are people actually. Which of course here, northeast and northwest, we have the Amish buggy things, which they don't necessarily have. In a lot of parts of the state.
The county dealt with that, with their raising of the buggy plate fee and things like that. Scott, did that get us all there? I don't know. There's, there's a lot of damage done to the roads, but.
Thanks.
Good.
Uh, just a question, Matt. Uh, I work in the criminal justice in Jay County. Um, what is the state's talk with the, it's saying going on? Just over two weeks ago, Jay County had seventeen overdoses. Um, Narcan seems to be the thing that everybody is turning to. At the hundred and seventy dollars a shot. Sometimes it's taking, I talked to him yesterday, one individual had six shots to bring it in, move it back. And they said they spent almost seven thousand dollars of local budget money just in one region, Jay County, of Narcan. Um, working in the, with offenders, it's becoming a game of how close can I get to death and be brought back? And their mentality is, well, I tell them, they're doing what they, they're looking strong. Uh, what is the state's thought when the animal is out there?
Yeah, that's, that's a very good question. I wish I had a crystal ball and could say, here's how we're going to solve that problem. Um, I've heard that, I've heard those stories all over, not just in Jay County.
And it's killing local budget.
Oh, it is. And then I've heard, even on the state level, you, you hear, um, you hear the people who say, well, we, we, you know, using the Narcan. Narcan's a drug that pulls you out of your high rather quickly. Um, if you're not too high. But others have said, you know, they, they get disappointed, you use it on them because they took away their buzz. It took away their high.
Well, there was, both, I don't remember, approved, posted bill, possibly felony charges on the offender. And services were rendered.
Yeah. We've, we've moved, you know, over the last six years, we've moved a lot of our drug crimes down in offenses, uh, jail time and things like that. Because, you know, the old adage, you put people in jail, you're, you're, you're afraid of, not that you're mad at. And are you afraid of someone who smokes marijuana? Um, well, you know what? It, it, it's getting to be now where we're starting to see a lot of issues, especially with the heroin and the other opioid issues. Where do we need to tighten up those sentences, maybe put additional sentences in? Um, you know, Dan gave an example, I mean, there were two examples, we talked about in Decatur. You know, where, where a couple's in an intersection. Both of them are passed out high. Two kids in the backseat in their car. You know, I mean, what, what's a criminal offense, how, you know? You just, you're appalled by that. And so after you get through the appalling part of it, what do you do next? You know? Um, uh, Dan, what's another one you gave with the?
There's a female, she's seven months pregnant, uh, they Narcan there. Uh, we call it CPS, this is seven month pregnant, we want her put in the system for CPS, but the job, she does, can't do it. Not more jobs. There's no law protecting the fetus. There's no neglect of a fetus, so that's what we talked about. So our names are tied as far as law enforcement. Uh, we give Narcan to the hospital to get out, and that was tough. She just gets lost in the system for that child that was, that's born, is going to be addicted to opioids, so that's why I'm here. Just a message to look at.
And the Narcan thing, local agencies are responding to one individual, say it two, three times in one day. They bring them out, a couple hours later, the individual is passed out again. Services are rendered again, a couple hours, I mean, two, three, four times a day on one individual. Um, the other thing I wanted to ask about when you talk about unemployment. And again, in the criminal justice field, how many felons coming out of prison or out of our local court system? Are there any expenses or anything that we can talk about with employers, unemployed felons?
I've got, I've got actually a word in this for two. Uh, he feels like that's one of his missions. You know, he brings them in, he gives them life skills, uh, makes them go through a financial planning class. Um, and he said, you know what? If, if you honestly show that you care about people, they're not as bad as, as you want to make them out to be. A lot of them aren't. But there was that problem, don't get me wrong. So he said, if people honestly want to make a change in their lives, he said, we need to help facilitate that. I don't know how you incentivize employers to hire felons. Um, now with a four percent unemployment rate, you know, you might see more of that because they're getting to where, you know, I can't find good people. But then you're back to the, I, I had one HR person said, what, I said, how are you going to handle this with thirty-seven out of fifty walking your drug test? She said, one of the things we're considering is just taking marijuana out as a drug we test. You know, so now more will test. So I got more options than people working for me. You know? I'm not sure that's the answer, but I'm not sure what else. I mean, that's where we're at. So no, I, 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 I wish I knew. Yeah?
Okay, we all know the infrastructure needs all this part. Where we got? And most of that is going to be skilled trade. Where are you going to get the workforce? I mean, you've got guys that can't pass a drug test, work for some mom and pop, you know, factory. And then you got a bunch of union guys that, I don't know if people realize it, but local one oh three, operating engineers, this becomes this area. How do they train, excited Anderson? We are rated one of the top ten in the nation for that type of training. That's all free of charge to the membership. And with your right to work deal, which says that he doesn't have to pay the membership, but he's breaking a leg, he could get all my things, you know? What better way to do this? You know, that's, it costs me four hundred and twenty-four dollars a year for my dues. Twenty of them goes to hardship. So say I fall and break my leg, I need, I've traveled like an hour, I can fly for that money. But if you figure it out over the course of the year, that's less than a bomb to pop, I bet. You know? Right to work was not explained right to the public. Everybody has a right to work.
That's, that's, that's the whole policy, okay?
Well, it needs to change.
I'll talk to individuals when I talk about it. That's, that's policy. I think it's created jobs in Indiana. I think it's been good for Indiana. Um, I'll say this, the operating engineers, your group, hundred percent on workers. Because of jobs for years, you got, you're ready for that. You have the skilled workforce to do that. And so I think.
If he decides he's going to pay the dues, and he doesn't do his job, he gets fired. My BA has, if you ask my BA, you have to represent.
That's why, that's why you choose exclusive rights to negotiate too. So you know you're representing him when you go in, so, again, sell the policy.
Uh, twelve percent of the budget goes to higher education. And higher education, of course, is at universities and so forth. They, they are, um, taxed through organization. And yes, we allow all this political space to be in the nation on our state campuses, universities. I don't think that's right, too. What can we do about that?
Well, there are a couple of bills filed on, on, with own and touching for certain things, but, but, you know, I, I, what I like, and I, I just had this conversation driving down here with the guy who's just whipping the car. Uh, and I said, I, I, you got to be very careful with free speech. Um, I think we need to have the ability to have free speech. I, I have to be able to be opposed to people and say it publicly, uh, without being, beating on the head. Um, I think there's a line that can be crossed, uh, when you begin to cut off speech because of the opposition. You're seeing a lot of universities saying, you know, we're not going to allow this, or allow this, allow this.
How can they do?
Yeah, and that, that's it. I don't think they can. But the issue's become, that's, you know, the court system, but if, if the courts. I think you have to look at it, they are state funded, uh, and what we've tried to remind many of them are, you're funded to educate. You're not funded to, to, to pontificate. Uh, but you're funded to educate. And so I think that, uh, there, there's a line you can cross. Have they crossed it? I think there's examples when they probably have. Um, but the only option we would have is, is a funding mechanism. Um, and that's not, that's not been seriously, uh, with, with that, because I think there's other ramifications depending on that, of the funding. But it's, it's, the, the discussion's going to continue, I guarantee that.
Is there a board that, is the education department responsible for the, um, university?
Yeah, there's a commission for higher education. And they, they approve a lot of the, they, they recommend the funding to the schools, they approve, they oversee kind of all the school's operations as one entity in the state. Um, they're, they're, they're not, they're not unaware of the situation. And, and I would say this, I think, you know, Indiana, we may have some issues, but we're not near as bad as some other states. And, and so I can't control what, you know, Massachusetts does, or Oregon, or places like that, what they may want to do with their schools.
Scott? Along that line, uh, House Bill eleven thirty, uh, is, uh, trying to balance that line between students, right, the regular space within schools, like newsletters, and administration. You know, right now. The burden, the burden of proof is, is more on the student that says, I can do this, I can write this in the school newsletter. This bill kind of flips that, and the burden of proof is now on the administration or the teachers, telling the student, no, you cannot do this because it's a slanderous. And so it kind of tips that balance, and I'm looking at these kids over here. Um, but I'm, I'm still one that believes that adults, we need to teach them how to use the freedom of speech correctly in a democracy. And there's also, you know, this is, this has been an issue going on, and I think for years. I'm in cases of reaching Supreme Court. So I'm not looking to take away students' freedom of speech or their creativity. I just don't think the burden of proof is have to go back onto teachers and administration. And that's the issue. Really more to say that, yes, this can go in the newsletter, newspaper, or, you know, this, uh, does not fit my community. It's slanderous.
I just want to look, I just want to see where it's at. It is, um, came out of committee on the sixteenth. But I don't see it on our calendar, so I'm not sure where it's at. I mean, there may be, or it's, yeah, it's on the calendar for this week. Paul? I'm sorry.
Yeah, fifteen ten bill, where are we at on that?
Fifteen ten, what's that? How do I know the number?
Big base flood elevation.
Two foot, they want to change it to one foot.
Um, I just want to follow, I don't know. Uh, I, afterwards, we'll take a look.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Uh, did someone, uh, representing South Adams Trail show up at, at Decatur, Indiana?
No.
No? Okay, well, I'll go ahead and make my, uh, request here. Uh, first of all, I, I just want to express how glad I am that you're so open and, uh, uh, share so openly, uh, your experiences down there in Indianapolis. It makes, it makes a big difference to hear how things really work. And, but I'm, I'm here today to, uh, I, I represent South Adams Trail, uh, president of South Adams Trail. Back in, uh, November fifteen, we made a, a presentation to the Regional Development Authority. Uh, for, uh, a four hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollar grant to help us with, uh, our trail project between Smith and Burn, Indiana. And a month later, on, uh, twelve twenty-one, uh, just before Christmas, they, they approved our project. But as you may or may not know, that has to go down to, uh, the Indiana Economic Development Corporation, uh, for their approval. And normally, those approvals, uh, take a month, uh, and, uh, but here, here we are, two months out. Since that got approved by the Attorney General, we haven't heard anything. So I'm kind of wondering, I don't know, I, I'm sure, uh, you don't make those decisions, but if, if there's any way you could, to.
I, I disagree. I know the IEDC has not, as I'm aware, has not reject, ever rejected a regulation from the regional cities already. So I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't look at the delay as a question mark, because I, they were down this week, the regional cities initiative is down, had a little presentation. And, uh, one of the things on their list of projects that they approved is the trail. So I think it'd be very hard to, to, for someone in Indianapolis to undo that, it was decided by the regional city.
Glad to hear that, and I hope you're correct.
I, I, hold our breath. What else? Any else?
Can you just get an mention something about the going to put a limit on the miles per gallon that you have to handle your vehicles?
The CAFE standards, yeah.
Um, is that going to be grandfathering in older vehicles or?
Yeah, that, that, I think it always is. Those new cars that you buy have to have a higher CAFE standard. Do you guys have any questions back there?
Everybody, everybody awake back there?
Get the suffer pressure presented, anyway. Anything else? Other mine? Yeah?
What's all the lottery money used for?
Lottery money, yeah, that's a good question. Lottery money, when it was sold to us back in the, the Evan By days, was to offset road funding, or offset the, uh, excise tax. Um, when they found out that, uh, part of that went to excise tax, the rest went into the general fund. Because again, they were running unbalanced budgets. They needed that money, so it got pulled away from the lottery and went into the general fund, and, and for the most part, there it has paid. There it has paid. So right now, I'd say it's just going into the general fund. But there, there, there is exactly why people have a problem. It's because the lottery was said, you know, we're going to do this, we'll give it on, but all that money's going to go to improve, you know, infrastructure, whatever, through roads. It's going to go, and then when they don't have a balanced budget, they go and steal from that money. Um, which is why, the two things I don't like is I won't spend our reserves. And then if people say, well, bond for roads. Bond for roads. You bond for projects that are going to be thirty, forty, fifty year projects. Not for a nine year, a ten year road. Um, we're paying on bonds today from the Evan By era. You know, from the, the early two thousands, we're still paying, we're paying tens of millions of dollars on bonds. So those roads have been repaved, repaid, and repaid. You know, so we're paying debt on top of debt on top of debt. You can't do that. You just can't do that. So I don't think that's an option. I think you have to use, and that's why if you dedicate to roads, you better stick to it. You got to create the mechanism that you're not going to come back and go, oh, well, we had a budget shortfall. Now we're going to have to go in and pull that money out of the road fund. Um, I think it's got to stand alone, relative.
How much, how much would you need in the reserve to still keep your trip away lady?
That's a question that's asked. Right now, they say anywhere from, it's a certain percentage of your budget. And right now, that's asked, anywhere from about a one point, uh, I'd say one point three to one point seven billion, uh, in reserve. Um, we've had very anemic growth in the US. I mean, we've had one and a half percent, two percent growth the last two or three years. That's not growth, that's inflation. Um, so we're looking at revenues that are going to stay flat. Uh, we're going to anticipate a little, obviously, there's a little growth, the two percent brings in more money. But you're losing all your buying power. So, but you're going to have, uh, a. you're losing all your buying power, so, but you're gonna have, uh, a smaller growth this next year, they anticipate a little more growth in the year after, eighteen to nineteen year, a little more growth. But until you, I think until you get that strong economic growth, your, your, your reserves, you better hang on to a good portion of it, not just to keep your bond rating, but to still pay your bills. Because we don't know, I mean, if anyone can tell me in the next two years how our economy's gonna do, there's so many things in flux right now, I think that we just have to wait and see.
Are they talking about state minimum wage? I know federal government's trying to beat stuff, but it's very...
Yeah, there was some talk of that, it, it, I, I'm not a, I'm not a proponent of raising the minimum wage, um, I think people say you can't make a...
They're making more out of people's pockets, and the wages aren't increasing.
I, I don't disagree, uh, but I, you know, I hear people say you can't make a living on minimum wage, and I don't think minimum wage is ever intended to be a living wage. Um, I think, I think raising it, raise, I mean, say it this way, the people who are talking, well, I can't, I can't, you know, I can't afford the sixty-five dollars a year for the gas tax, they're the same people going through the drive-through twice a day at McDonald's. Um, you know, I go through the drive-through at McDonald's too, you can tell, but the reality of it is, is the choice we make where we spend our expendable cash, and if you raise that minimum wage to fifteen dollars an hour, I guarantee you this, your four ninety-nine, you know, Happy Meal's gonna become a seven ninety-nine Happy Meal, um, you're gonna spend a lot more on your food, because of your, of your gas tax.
I mean, number six was, is that bill for the handgun registration or permit dead, or is that still alive?
No, it, the bill is dead. Uh, the, the permit, a, a, as you know, to, to get a handgun, you go through a process of a background check, a criminal background check, and so on. Then Indiana says, if you've gotten that per, if you've gotten that approval to own a gun, you have to have a permit given to you by Indiana to carry it off of your premises. So if you want to carry it in public, in a certain place, you can never take it, but if you want to carry it for your protection off premises, you have to have a permit. There's been a push to say, if, if I have to go through this whole lengthy background to get a gun, why am I restricted of where I can carry it? Um, I think it's being a little bit misinterpreted, because I've heard people say, well, if you pass this bill, then everybody gets a gun. That's not the case, you still can't buy a gun, just because we eliminated our permitting law.
But you can be given a gun.
What's that?
You can be given a gun.
You can be given a gun, I, and I know...
Drive sale.
And I, I know, and I know, and this is where I part with the NRA, uh, I think we need to have, uh, some tighter background checks on private sales, I think we need to have better training, uh, and I think I'd, I'd require a, a training class. Uh, but where that bill is at right now, it, it is, it was rolled into another bill as a study, to let's, let's really get the issue out there and say, what are the, other states have done it? What's been the pushback in those states? Have they seen increases in, in, in domestic violence and crime? You know, what's been the problem if we do it? And I think doing that, first, I mean, he's had this bill for several years, but it's the first time we've really got to the point where we're really got, we gotta talk about what are the ramifications of it. So it was put into a bill that has to do with a protective order, I don't know if you saw that, that if a, if a, if a person has a protective order against them, that kind of quote serves as their permit, um, so they can carry their handgun off premises with that protective order, uh, it got rolled into that as a study for next year.
So explain this number six then, what does this say?
What is number six?
Your question on, do you agree with, do you agree with the permit?
The permit, it just says, do you, should Indiana have a permit process? Um, to get a, not to get a handgun, but to carry handgun.
Okay.
And I, I, I still lean towards, I think we probably need to keep, have a permitting process, you know, I have a permit, but I, I still have a problem going through that process.
In all benefits of, my department has done a much better job getting those permits approved, going digital fingerprint. I agree, it used to take nine months maybe, now we are back almost within forty-five days of getting those approved, as long as you do the digital fingerprint, and the imprint, that's the back of things up.
Yeah, yeah, so back to...
We are, we have got much better, uh, Lieutenant Carter's made a very profound statement that we're gonna approve it at that.
Other questions, comments? I don't keep you longer than you want to stay.
Thanks for taking the time, man.